Work session at Twalton City Council focusing on barriers and solutions to housing. This is a required meeting by the state when a city has a level of rent burdened households above a certain percentage. And I believe we're definitely above the 25% or so of rental, folks who are experiencing rent burden. So we've got an assembly of our staff and experts on housing to see how we can better meet the goals that we all have in the city of Twalton, get more people housed, especially in, you know, permanently affordable housing, or what we traditionally call workforce housing, so that the majority of their income isn't going towards housing, that they can, you know, spend some money on food and medication and other things, not a big chunk of their paycheck just paying the rent. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Cody and Erin. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you to our panelists and members of the public for being here tonight. This is our special council meeting and public discussion, as the mayor noted, on affordable housing and housing production and severe rent burdens and housing services, and how nonprofits and governments can work together to find housing solutions. So we're really excited for this discussion tonight. I want to go through a quick agenda review, if this works. Oh, there we go. Good, excellent. So we'll begin with an event overview from staff that will cover the background and purpose of this special meeting, and then we will move into our panel discussion. And we have experts here that we're honored to have joining us tonight, and we're really excited to hear from them. We've set aside some time for questions from council and the public, and then we also have some time for public comment, and then we have a few next steps before we adjourn tonight. So before we get into the bulk of the agenda tonight, I thought it would be beneficial to do a quick round of introductions. Just a reminder, if you are speaking, you can hit the little icon at the bottom, and that'll turn your mic on, and then when you're done speaking, you can turn it off. I hear that if too many of the microphones are on at the same time, other people's microphones start shutting off. Let's start with Councilor Sacco, and then we'll just go around the room.
Hello, my name is Kristin Sacco. I'm a Twalton City Councilor.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Hillier, Twalton City Councilor.
Good evening. Patricia Rojas, she/her pronouns, and I'm the Metro Housing Director.
Good evening. Frank Bumanic, Mayor, Twalton.
Valerie Pratt, Twalton City Council President.
I'm Molly Rogers. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Washington County Director of Housing Services. Thank you for inviting me to be here tonight.
My name is Bridgette Brooks, and I'm another one of your Twalton City Councilors. Hi, everybody.
Hi. Hi, I'm Rachel Duke. I'm the Executive Director at Community Partners for Affordable Housing. I'm really, really happy to be here this evening, excited to have a conversation with everyone, and I use she/her pronouns.
Hello, my name is Octavio Gonzalez, and I'm a Twalton Councilman.
Good evening. My name is Erin Engman. I'm with the City of Twalton, and I work as a Senior Planner. My pronouns are she/her.
My name's Cody Field. I'm the Management Analyst in Community Development, and I go by he/him.
Round it out. I'm Sherilyn Lombos. I'm the City Manager here for the City of Twalton.
Thanks, everyone. I think I will turn it over to Erin, and she will kick this off with our background and purpose.
Thanks, Cody. Okay, for some background, I wanted to briefly speak about House Bill 4006 and set the stage for why we are gathered here tonight. This bill was enacted in 2018 as a reaction to the state declared housing emergency. It requires cities to hold a public meeting like the one we're having tonight, when at least 25% of renter households are considered severely rent burdened. And this means that households are spending more than 50% of their income on rent and utilities. And with the help of our esteemed panelists, we will discuss the causes and consequences of severe rent burdens, barriers to reducing the burden, and on a more positive note, some The Oregon Housing and Community Services Department tracks rent burden for cities with a population greater than 10,000 people. In Twalton, 26.8% of households are considered severely rent burdened. And more broadly, we know that Washington County has some of the most expensive rental rates, which Molly will discuss with us. Regionally, the cities shown on this graph, the ones in Navy are also experiencing severe rent burden, so you'll see our neighbors at Tigard, Wilsonville, and Newburgh are also experiencing some severe rent burden. As additional background, I wanted to revisit some of Twalton's planning documents that were centered around housing, and that includes the 2019 Housing Needs Analysis. This document is a state requirement that helps cities determine future housing needs using a 20-year outlook. The report found that Twalton has a lack of affordable housing and a deficit of land zone for higher densities. It also found that incomes have not kept pace with housing or rental costs. And then looking at the graphs on this slide, we are comparing rent and income data that was presented in the Housing Needs Analysis and in our current situation today. If you look closely at the data, you'll notice that we have a 2024 figure for rent but not income. And the reason for this is that median income is determined using the census data, which was compiled in 2022. So it's not necessarily apples to apples, but it kind of gives us an indication of what's happening. So with that being said, median rent has increased by 73% in the span of seven years, while median incomes have only increased by 45% in the span of five years. And again, while we don't have the 2024 data on incomes, one could assume that incomes continue to lag behind rent increases. As we talk about housing, particularly affordable housing, I wish to highlight that the Department of Housing and Urban Development uses area median, excuse me, area median income to determine eligibility for affordable housing programs. You can see that affordable housing support is directed to-
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
So I'll just repeat that sentence. You can see that affordable housing support is directed to those families who are earning less than 80% of the area median income. And when we discuss supportive services, we are talking about those with the greatest need and whose incomes are under 30% of the median income. And while housing affordable to families in the 80% to 120% range is defined as workforce housing, it is important to note that families in the lower ranges that are eligible for affordable housing are still working. And we'll kind of review some of that data on this next slide. I kind of find this slide helpful and kind of humanizing and demonstrating what various incomes can afford. A family where one parent works as a paralegal and the other is a stay-at-home parent would fall within 60% of area median income, and this is in more of the broad Portland metro region, it's not necessarily Twalton specific. But this household could be eligible for affordable housing assistance. Their salary of $71,000 could afford a monthly rent of around $1,750. And the numbers I found for Twalton for September of 2024, it was listed that the median rent is currently around $2,230. So that could be affordable to a family with an income around $94,000. You'll hear more from our panel, but affordable housing relies on a number of different funding streams. In 2023, the city completed an equitable funding plan report, excuse me, equitable housing funding plan report, that evaluated creative financing opportunities to support the development of affordable housing. This plan explored potential funding tools like a construction excise tax or urban renewal that could be used to fill the funding gap. It also studied tools that could reduce costs, like the nonprofit low-income housing tax exemption, excuse me, that was a mouthful, that council recently passed. The report also highlighted the importance of building partnerships with regional and nonprofit housing providers. And with that said, I'll turn the presentation over to Molly Rogers to begin our panel discussion.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Molly Rogers, I just wanted to share my appreciation for Cody and Erin, who's taken a lot, have taken a lot of care in developing this panel and a lot of the data to represent all this. Just a little bit about me, though, before I start. I have been in Washington County for almost exactly one year, and I have been thrilled to meet so many people who have been so committed through the whole continuum, from shelter, different shelter options, all the way to permanent supportive housing and other affordable housing options throughout the region. And I like, I previously came from being the interim and interim Director of the Portland Housing Bureau. I was at the Portland Housing Bureau for about five years, and before that, I was the Director of Asset Management for Home Forward, which is the housing authority in Multnomah County. But my, well, my origin story here does start with when I was an intern. In graduate school, I was working on my master's in public policy and administration. I got sent out here to Hillsborough, Oregon, to do a homelessness study, and I spent a lot of time actually out in the various, various camps. I spent a lot of time in shelters and talked to dozens and dozens of people experiencing homelessness at that time. So it's great coming back 20, over 20 years later, where I get to see so much tremendous growth and, but a continued commitment to all the various housing needs of this county. So thank you for welcoming me here. This past year, the department has realized that we needed a mission and vision statements that recognized the growth that we have in expanding particularly our business lines in ending and preventing homelessness. With that, and I wanted to, and with that, we've spent quite a bit of time with our advisory bodies, our boards, different stakeholders, and a consultant to help sort of rebrand our new vision statement. So I'm really thrilled to be able to kind of help launch this statement with you all today. Actually, can you go to the next slide first real fast? And then we'll go back. Yeah, just one more, and then we'll do it again. There we go. We envision a Washington County where everyone has an affordable home with this supports and opportunities each of us needs to thrive. So we like to use a lot of inclusive language here, and it's not just about an affordable home, but it's so much more than that. And then now with our mission statement, look backwards. And the Department of Housing Services creates pathways out of homelessness. We promote housing stability and invest in affordable communities in Washington County and our residents. Thank you for that. Part of the work that we've done is really articulating our top values. We center racial equity and promote equitable access for all to an array of housing opportunities. And we do this through our responsiveness. We are committed to meeting the diverse needs of the community we serve and adapting in response to changing conditions. Collaboration. We work in partnership with the people we serve, other public agencies such as the City of Twalton, nonprofit organizations, private businesses, and our neighbors. Accountability. We believe in transparency and being good stewards of public resources. And sustained impact. We take the long view through a commitment to a deliberate, strategic, and holistic, sustainable approach. And our priorities, again, to promote equity and racial justice by addressing barriers that create and perpetuate disparities in housing access and opportunities. We also want to expand access to housing options that meet the community's affordability needs through housing development, rental assistance, and homeownership. We provide connections to resources and services that help people achieve stability in their housing and create pathways to greater opportunity. We want to provide a continuum of housing and supportive services to make homelessness a rare, a brief, and nonrecurring experience. Also, we want to safeguard the affordability of existing housing communities through asset and portfolio management, reinvestment, and acquisitions. And we promote systems change by pursuing opportunities for policy opportunities, improvements. All right. Okay, here is a slide, this is more of a tool slide, that could be used to help kind of visualize what different tools and incentive programs you can adopt as a local community. This isn't meant to be sort of exhaustive, but it's also not meant to be, you know, necessarily what works best for any particular community. You need to decide for yourselves what makes sense for your community. But it lays out that there are different tools and options depending on what kind of essentially type, what range of incomes you're trying to serve as your housing market. You've got a variety of, there are things that you want to span. As Erin laid out, there's a whole range of different housing opportunities that we like to call, with the spectrum of different area median incomes. As we pointed out, the 120% plus, you know, we're talking about professionals. But there's, there's really your whole housing stock in how you want to incentivize certain housing types through what we call development standards. And that could be through, say, your zoning code, through, or other codes and regulations that you adopt, that would essentially span across all of your housing that you would be building. But then there's other kinds of tools and programs that we have used. We call it sort of, we want to incentivize a developer to, say, keep certain of the portion of their homes to be affordable to, say, households that are earning, say, less than 60 or 80% of area median income. So this is where we get into that chart that Erin used, that we do different financing options for that. It could be things like you waive your system development charges, you could be using your construction excise tax, and you're saying, okay, in exchange, developer, for us to subsidize or give you some kind of regulatory relief, we want to see you restrict your building for a certain amount of years to be then affordable for people at a certain income level. And that's been a very successful, highly successful sort of model that we've used in different state programs, but generally, everyone is bringing, so those, yeah, often those developers are trying to get some, some kind of benefit to their project. And then there's the, what we call, you know, just providing funding, and this is where Patricia's going to talk a lot about the benefits of the, of the Metro Housing Bond. That's one example of that direct loan or grant into a project and say, okay, we will actually offset a significant portion of your development costs, and we want you to keep these homes affordable for, say, 60 years, for, so for a generational impact of affordability. So we're talking many, many dozens of households in one even unit that could benefit from that one-time-only investment. I do want to caution, often, it isn't always just one time, you know, these, these buildings do need to have repair and so forth. But the deeper in affordability you're trying to target, generally, the more subsidy you need to provide. And just a quick note on this, we're going to talk a lot about sort of zero to 30, but also 30 to 60. You can, generally, it's really hard to have your rent set at that zero to 30 mark and still have it pencil. So often, what we do to really achieve that deeper affordability is we like to pair a, some kind of rent assistance component or an operating support there. So that could be, say, we, as a housing authority, we manage the Section 8 or Housing Choice voucher program that could be used as a project-based voucher. And so we can pair our capital resources, say, we have our Metro Bond, we can pair that with our low-income housing tax credits to bring in equity for the project, but then we also bring in some vouchers. And that's when people who are coming in with, on SSI, or on fixed incomes, or people who are really on disabilities, it's really tend to be seniors, or seniors, or people who are really maybe on welfare, our families can be able to actually afford the rent. Without that voucher, it's very difficult to find housing in our market, and frankly, across America, where you're not rent burdened in some way. We're going to talk about that a little bit. Next slide. So through Washington County, oh, this is a little bit of a snapshot of some of the housing instability data that we see here in Washington County. Erin mentioned earlier, but I want to really bring home the point, and I was actually a little bit surprised when I really did the research on this, coming to Washington County. It is, we are in the most expensive county in the state for renters. So we're close to $1,700 on, for your median rent, and that's just median when we look at all the different bedroom sizes, so that's going to be a big range depending on what bedroom size you're in. Clackamas County is the most expensive for homeownership. We run various different kinds of programs at the, at the Housing Services and the Housing Authority. When we look at all our various wait lists, we have 18,000 households waiting for housing assistance today that could move into housing if we had the resources to do so. That's a very sobering number. We are hitting a point where our rental market is pretty tight at 5%. Anything less than 5% is considered a shortage in housing. So it's, it's a little bit of a proxy metric, if you will, around what kind of shortage and what kind of tools you need to do to increase housing production. Obviously, you don't want units laying around, but there's a natural amount of turnover that you need in a marketplace, that you need to see some percentage of a vacancy rate, that's okay. But we are hovering that place where we, we should be, we need to see some action or need to be able to understand that there really is a shortage of housing. Erin already talked about the number of rent burdened households we have in, in Washington County. It's, you know, we're talking about almost close to half that are rent burdened. And when we last did our point in time count, we are, we've done, we've made, made a lot of groundwork in our work to end homelessness. We've shut down all the major camps, encampments that are in Washington County, but obviously we still have people experiencing homelessness at any point in time here, and the last count was 773. Next slide. So this is part of the work we do, is our consolidated plan is part of the work we do in reporting to HUD. And this shows sort of the, sort of that supply and demand, if you will, by income bracket. And you can see the biggest shortage by far is in that zero to 30 range. So it's not surprising, this is how many communities look, and that's where we need more of those, like I said, those vouchers or those income-based kind of housing programs go a long way for people who truly cannot afford what the market rent is. But then you see a little bit of an interesting inverse there around the 51% to 80% AMI range, and that's where we actually see what we call a surplus. But as we mentioned before, it's not like we have sitting vacant units. What we have is a lot of people at zero to 50, living in our 51% to 80% AMI units. So that's where we get our rent burden. That's where we're getting, seeing that 44% in particular. And then you see that we're kind of hovering kind of in and out. We do have a surplus, we do technically have a deficit in 120% AMI. Those are folks, though, you end up, if you don't have a whole range of housing, you do start seeing households then feeling compression, and they're all of a sudden competing with people who have lower incomes, which isn't a great situation either. Next slide. This is kind of another way to look at that data from that previous slide. This is called the cumulative affordability gap. That column there is, is sort of, on that right hand demonstrates that while the overall gap for units at zero to 60 AMI is 3,562, there are 16,401 extremely low-income households living in rental housing that are, in rent that is too high for their income, so causing them to be rent burdened. And in this challenging homeownership market, even at households at 100% or more of area median income, it puts an additional strain in the overall rental market, because those, yep, like I said, higher income households are competing for those low-income units. Next slide. And this is a chart, I just want to show you, different house, homeownership rates based on race and ethnicity. This is from a couple of years ago. We see the most significant disparities in African-American and Black households, as well as Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander here across the different, these are different cities. We didn't have Twaltons. This is tied for different data sources that we had. But it's, obviously, the story is, well, what's interesting is Hillsborough has really high American Indian compared to other parts of the county. And so it really does, we've seen a lot of success in homeownership programs that really do focus on culturally-specific strategies and culturally-specific resources to be able to move what we call closing the minority homeownership gap.
What is an NH?
Non-Hispanic.
And then next slide, a few more updates for you all. Here is, so how many people here have heard of the Metro Housing Bonds? All right, a few of you, great. We, we worked with Metro to, they established, when the voter-approved measure passed, we established housing targets for the different counties. So we have a target for overall unit production, and we also created targets for family-size units, those are two or more bedrooms. We also wanted to see that deeper affordability, that, that biggest need being met, so we established a goal for zero to 30 households. And we also created a local or county-specific goal for permanent supportive housing, and that's really housing for people who are chronically homeless, who've been homeless for a very long time, who, and also have a disabling condition. And that's where you have to bring in all the various resources to bear, capital, operating support, the vouchers, supportive and clinical services into a single project. We created targets, and then we have a number, we've completed a number of projects, and we have a number still in progress with you all. Rachel's going to talk about one here soon. But we are well on our, on our way to exceed all the goals. The unit production goal of over 18%, and then we're most exceeding, actually, in our permanent supportive housing, mainly because of the resources coming from the supportive housing services measure that we've been able to bring in to meet those goals. Next slide. Here shows, this is a map, this shows where we've been placing all the Metro Bond projects, and then it sort of shows you how many have been completed, and all the green, so you've got the smattering all over the county. Rachel's going to talk about that one orange green, that one yellow one down there, down in Twalton. And then we have two more that are on their way to needing to be closed. One is in partnership with SEPA again, Woodland Hearth. And the last, but not least, is one being managed by the Housing Authority of Washington County, so that's on us, 209th and Alexander in Aloha. And that's where we will show that we will, our total units will be 958 if everything goes as planned. Last slide, and that's it. All right, I think we turn it over to Patricia.
Can I, can I?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Patricia Rojas. I am the Housing Director for Metro, and so pleased to be with you here tonight.
I think we had one quick question before you-
Not, not even a question, just, just in case people are curious, too, Hillsborough and Beaverton weren't on that list because they get their own funding, so if people don't, there's, there are projects going in there, they're just not recorded on this particular slide because they get their own funding and they make their own choices, and they collaborate with the county on facilitating spending out their money. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the work that Metro does in our community to partner with counties, with cities, and organizations like SEPA that are doing great work to address our housing crisis, as well as to end homelessness- work to address our housing crisis as well as to end homelessness in our community. I'm not sure how many people here are aware of what Metro is. All right, I'll say I didn't know what it was until I applied to work there. So I'm not surprised to see that a lot of folks don't know what it is. And it's unique. We are one of this, one of several states that have a regional government. So we have state, city, counties, and we have a regional government around the tri-county area. So it's not exactly the tri-county boundary. There is a boundary for the metro region, but essentially our work is to help coordinate around issues that are bigger than any one of us singularly can solve for. And what we bring to the table is the ability to coordinate, bring folks together to try to solve really complex issues like a housing crisis. And so within the, within the housing and homelessness world, we really are committed to trying to address more funding for affordable housing, but also funding for the resource, for the services that are much needed for folks to stay housed. Folks talked a moment ago about, you know, the, some of the causes of homelessness and I'll just say, you know, or even in terms of who, who is being served in the affordable housing units that we're building, it's, it's really all kinds of folks and folks that are our parents, you know, folks who are on disability or are on social security. And when we look at $1,600 a month for a household, if you're on disability or SSI or some sort of support, financial support, it's not enough. And so I think it is a real concern that we have a real issue that I'm excited that we're having this conversation because it is going to take everybody working together to figure out how do we address housing stability and have it so that folks can actually stay in their communities and thrive. So this slide talks a little bit about the two measures that we have. So on the left, you'll see the 2018 Metro Affordable Housing Bond. Molly was just talking about this. This is a general obligation bond that was passed by, by the voters of the region. And the goal was to build 3,900 new affordable units across the region. And we also had a goal with that of, excuse me, reaching 1,600 units for that deeply affordable bracket of that 30, below 30% AMI, as well as 1,950 family sized units. And so notable with this is this is only bricks and sticks. It is only to build, it's the capital funding to build affordable housing. And we, we understood and folks in the region understood that housing alone, a unit may not solve homelessness and it may not lead to housing stability for folks. Folks need services. So in 2020, the supportive housing services measure passed across the region. And this was a services measure. It really was intended in a way as a match to the bond that we had where we have units, but we need some, some supports and services to keep people housed and help people get into housing. So the goal with the 2020, with the affordable housing, sorry, the supportive housing services measure was to house at least 5,000 individuals that had, you know, experienced long-term housing instability, chronic homelessness, and then to support 10,000 additional units or households to stay in those units. So really that 5,000 and 10,000 were at the time, this was passed in 2020, a lot of this was informed by the 2019 point in time count and what housing instability and rent burden looked like across the region at that point in time. I'll just say that despite our best efforts, you know, we did have a pandemic which changed the landscape of, of things, but we, we continue to see a rising need for both affordable housing as well as services. Next slide, please. So this, for the Affordable Housing Bond, this is showing where across the region we are adding buildings, so where we're adding projects. And so you'll see that this is all across the region, several in Multnomah County, Washington County, we'll hear more about that, and then of course Clackamas County. And one thing that's notable is that we really look at trying to bridge housing, affordable housing with things like transportation and schools and the various amenities that families will need to thrive. And so this is a significant increase of affordable housing across the region and many in areas that never had it before. So this hopefully will allow for folks to stay in their communities. Next slide, please. So we have made a lot of progress with our partners. So we have 13 projects currently under construction and 21 are open to residence. And what that looks like is more than 1,874 bond units have been completed and more than 4,600 are in the pipeline. Next slide, please. With this slide, what I would like to, to note is that we have exceeded, we are going to exceed the goals that we set. So we set out to build 3,900 units. We're going to pass 4,700 at least. So we're really excited about that. But we've exceeded all of our targets. So whether this, the unit production overall or the number of units for deeply affordable households all across or for families. So we have made significant progress. And again, I just want to say thank you, Washington County and SEPA for your role in making this a success. Next slide, please. So I'm going to pivot now to supportive housing services. This was a measure that was passed. It's a tax on the highest income earners in our region. And what it is designed to do is, is fund services to help people get out of chronic homelessness and into housing and stay housed, as well as help folks who are housing unstable or on the edge of entering into homelessness to remain, to remain in their housing. So this could be services and it could be case management, it could be health services, it could be job training, it could be all kinds of things. Really every household is different in terms of what they need. And this measure is designed to work with the community to figure out what does your, what does your community need in terms of services and, and develop programming that supports those needs. Next slide, please. And, you know, I'll say, we've continued to see increasing homelessness across the region. And that is, I'll just say, that's not hard to figure out. I think that we, what we do know is that the biggest reason why people enter into homelessness and why people lose their housing to begin with is they can't afford it. And so we see rising eviction rates currently and the highest reported reason for those eviction notices is non-payment. So it's not too surprising that we are where we are. Pandemic really impacted a lot of households in our region. So I think this is a, you know, we're going to still be in this boat for a while and we have a lot of work to do. But this actually shows some of the main categories of services and work that is being funded by the supportive housing services measure. The, the work started in 2021. And so we are now three years in, are moving into our fourth year now. And so we are focusing on permanent supportive housing placements. As Molly mentioned earlier, these are, it's a service type where you have a unit of housing that's paired with long-term services and rent assistance so that that household can stay housed. And we had FY '24 last year, we had a goal of serving 1,395 households. We did not reach that goal. Last year we came close, but we have, we served 277 households in just one quarter alone. And so we have seen that the, the last quarter of every fiscal year tends to be the highest production year, like quarter of every year. And then for rapid rehousing, we had an annual goal last year of serving 935 households. We surpassed that. And so again, in the last quarter, we had, we served 489 households. And then I'll move to homelessness prevention and shelter units. I didn't, I would quickly like to describe rapid rehousing. That is also for folks who are experiencing homelessness, but they're not chronically homeless. So perhaps they recently lost a job or experienced a medical crisis, are, are recently homeless and really need a little bit of support to get back into the housing, some short-term supports and would exit out of this type of program. So as you can see here, again, we, we are working on providing rent assistance and case management for folks to stay into housing and then adding shelter beds. So all of these areas, all of these households, all of these beds is what we are seeing just for FY '24. Next slide, please. So since the inception of the program, we have supported 4,256 households with permanent supportive housing. So that's that deep, deep support that we have for folks experiencing chronic homelessness. 2,000, over 2,000 folks with rapid rehousing, over 15,073 households with eviction prevention. To me, this is a very sobering number because we have seen homelessness increase across the region, regionally speaking. And I think about what it, what it would look like if this wasn't there, if we didn't have that resource to support those households to stay in housing. So I think it's quite remarkable. And overall, we have supported over 1,800 units of, or beds for shelter. Next slide, please. Again, this is really talking about the permanent supportive housing concept of a unit of housing plus rental assistance and wraparound services. That is the heart of the supportive housing services measure and it is a best practice and proven to work best for folks who've been homeless for a long time. Next slide, please. And so as, as Molly was mentioning, you know, there are, there are areas that we all kind of sit in, in the community in terms of addressing our housing crisis. And one area that government has been historically very, very helpful in is in filling that deepest affordable, affordability area. It's not an area that the market will ever fill for. And so we know that the Portland had a bond, they've spent their bond, and by the end of this fiscal year, our bond will also be fully committed. And so that then forces the question of where do we go from here? And so this slide really just shares a little bit of some of the work that's been happening thus far. So we've started have, asking the question and having conversations with communities, community members from across the region, really looking at, you know, where do we go from here? What have we learned and what are the opportunities? And then in July, the COO for Metro provided a recommendation to Metro Council that really addressed one significant area of opportunity, which is that the supportive housing services measure was projected to collect $250 million a year and is, is currently collecting much higher than that. And so I, I want to be very clear that, you know, there isn't enough money despite the staggering amount of money that we have, there isn't enough money for everything, right? So we will have to prioritize and make choices. But we are exploring the possibility of adding a use of funds. So the service, the SHS program really only funds services at this point. It can't fund housing. So we're considering going back out to the voters and asking to add that on as an option while retaining the focus and priority for homelessness and addressing housing instability for households. So it'd be kind of adding another tool to the toolkit is kind of how I think about it. And then, and so at this point, Metro Council has begun to have public work sessions and exploring their kind of unpacking the COO recommendation and, and dialoguing around where, where do they want to take action on any singular part of the recommendation? So all of that is to say, we have a lot more work to do. We have more communicate, or more conversations to have as a broader region. And it's not going to be an easy solution, but I'm confident that we will find a way to at least take a step forward and continue to develop affordable housing. And I think that's it for me.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Rachel Duke with Community Partners for Affordable Housing. Community Partners for Affordable Housing, we also call it SEPA because it takes a lot less time and is easier to say. So SEPA started about 30 years ago in, at St. Anthony's Church in Tigard. And when we started, it was in response to the needs of that particular church community. There were parishioners who belonged to the church who were really struggling with housing and being able to stay housed. And the church brought together some other religious communities and they started this idea of an organization. And in 1993, we were able to get our 501(c)(3) and start serving folks with housing. And the first couple of buildings that we have are buildings that we acquired, so not buildings that we built. We still own them. One of them is responsible for some of the gray hair in my head, just as we continue to try to keep that building functioning as it's, as it ages. So I have been doing this work at SEPA for 10 years, or actually nine years. I'll be starting my 10th year very soon. Before that, I worked in this field for almost 30 years, started at a nonprofit called Outside In, which works with kids who are homeless. And then I actually had my paths crossed several times, it seems like with Molly. I worked for the government for quite a while and then I'm, I'm back here in the nonprofit world, which makes me super happy. So I want to talk a little bit about what we do at Community Partners and I'm going to, there's all these ways that we connect to the conversation that we've been having. So I'll, I'll be trying to do that as I talk along. So we, I like to say, if I, if you were stuck in the elevator with me and I was going to give you my elevator speech, I would tell you that at SEPA, we do five things. Thing number one is we build affordable housing. And I'm going to be talking in a, in a little bit about Plan Bex Gardens, which is on Boone's Ferry, really close to here. And we're super excited that we're going to be moving people into that building in January. So that is coming. We don't just build the buildings, we manage those buildings into the future. So that includes buildings that we acquired 30 years ago. It includes buildings that we're building now. And because we're a mission-based nonprofit, we're not, we don't see ourselves as just just keeping buildings affordable for the required amount of time. It's really our goal to keep those buildings affordable as long as we can. So how, you know, I don't know, time will go on for a long time. It's hard to say exactly how long we'll be able to maintain them, but the goal is to keep them, you know, for 99 years at least, as far as I'm concerned. Really core to the work that we do is we support our residents with services. They're very much like the services that you just heard described, although the services at our buildings are not, for the most part, paid for with supportive housing service dollars, although we, in some cases, they might be if we're doing permanent supportive housing, but much of our housing is not permanent supportive housing. It's housing for folks who need affordable housing. And sometimes folks still need services. And so that's a really, really core part of what we do, what our organization does. I'm going to go into more detail about what that looks like. Because of the levy that we just heard about, we are also providing services to people who are homeless. So we're working with people in the community who are homeless and helping them find actually housing in, in the private market that they can move into. And then we're supporting them so that they're successful in that housing. And then we love to go to meetings. We're advocates for housing justice. We like to come out and talk to electeds and, and others about the work that we're doing. You're going to see a picture in a little bit of a planning process that Tuolotin went through and I'm there at that planning process. So, and all of my staff, we're all busy going to community-based meetings. It's part of what we do. So, next slide. So I want to start really talking about really what asset management is when I say, so before I talk about development and services, I want to talk about the overall commitment that we make to our housing. So we build it. Sometimes our housing has more than, so we have some housing communities that have 15 different housing sources. One of the great things about the bond is it has taken, you know, it pays for a chunk of the housing, but we, we call it a capital stack. We kind of layer all the layers on top of each other to, to make it so that we can have enough money to actually build. And it's complicated and each of those funding sources has compliance requirements. And so it's a big commitment and, and we take it really seriously as stewards. So we have 11 apartment communities. We primarily serve Washington County. We started in the Tigard area. And I will also say, when I started at SEPA nine years ago, my board said that what their main goal was at that time was to see if they could find a way to build some affordable housing in Tuolotin. So we've had our eye on Tuolotin for a really, really long time, which just makes it so gratifying that, that we're here. But we serve much of Washington County and then we also serve Multnomah County. And we have two buildings right now in Multnomah County and we're going to be building a third near Markham Elementary School, if you, if that's, if you know where that is. I think, next slide. So really, as I said, core to what we do is we provide resident services. And I will say that I, I don't know, I spend a lot of time writing grants so that we can continue to do this because our properties do not pay for all the services that we provide. We provide services for kids. We have after-school programming and summer programming. And we do make sure kids have backpacks with the school supplies they need and winter coats. We have family nights that are focused on bringing families together at our properties because that's really, it's really important at our buildings where we do have young people that we're working to support them. So that is a pretty core part of what we do. And we also have a lot of programs for seniors. We have right now three buildings, two which are senior only and one which is mostly seniors as it happens. And I just got a copy of the calendar today for the next three months for those buildings and it includes a lot of health and wellness activities. and it includes a lot of health and wellness activities and some fun activities because actually bingo is fun, but also, I mean, some people like bingo. But also, it's also important that people are connected to each other because actually, community helps create stability. And if you know who your neighbor is and you're connected to them, you're more likely to be successful in your housing, and you're also more likely to notice when your neighbor's having something going on that maybe, maybe is important that someone check in on them. The real heart of our program is eviction prevention and housing stabilization. And what that means is that staff who provide resident services work closely with our households if their housing is threatened. So, for example, if someone is, has a hard time paying their rent, because you just saw a slide that shows that people in some of our higher-income units, up to sixty percent, some of those folks are super rent-burdened, our staff will work hard to connect them to rent assistance. If there's a lease enforcement issue, our staff will work hard to mediate and connect with property management so that we can try and resolve that. And if one of our residents goes, or households has to go to court, SEPA staff will accompany that household to court so that they're able to work out an agreement that works for that household. People will sign just about anything if they're thinking that they're about to lose their housing. So, we want to make sure people understand what they're signing and that we're advocating for them there. So, eviction prevention and housing stabilization is probably what takes the core, the most amount of time of our staff because it's so important that once somebody gets into affordable housing, that they don't lose it because they have a medical crisis or they lost their job or any of the other things that can really happen. We really want to make sure we're supporting our residents there. I talked a little bit already about the importance of community building. So, that is also something that we think about through our, at all of our properties, family and senior. And then, over the last few years, we've been able to really start doing permanent supportive housing as well. What that looks like for us is we're involved in two buildings where a hundred percent of the apartments there are for people who are exiting homelessness. One of those is a building that we rehabbed in downtown Portland called the Joyce Hotel, and that has sixty-six units of permanent supportive housing and a lot of service providers on site. And another is that we do in collaboration with Washington County in Aloha called Hartwood Commons, and that has fifty-four units. And we're actually just the service provider there. It's kind of a relief to not be responsible for the building. So, thank you for that. But, it's, the services are a lot of work, they're complex. The things people are addressing in their lives are complex. And also, in many ways, watching people get better, it can be incredibly inspiring and wonderful. So, it's hard work, but it's good work, and it's exciting to do. Next slide. So, as I said, first thing, we build affordable housing. We have a project in Tigard that's going, we're just about ready to start construction on that. We're pretty excited. Project in Portland and in Beaverton that will be starting construction, we hope, I think, next year. And then, Plan Beck Gardens, which we're going to be leasing in Tuolatin. All of those buildings have permanent supportive housing in them. They're not a hundred percent permanent supportive housing, but they all have some amount of housing that's dedicated for folks who are leaving homelessness. So, at Plan Beck Gardens, we have sixteen apartments. They have those rent subsidies that Molly talked about. That makes it so that we can, it helps to make the housing pencil out better to have those subsidies, if we're renting them, to folks who are on very limited incomes. And then, we have services there just for those families. At Plan Beck, we have, we're working with community action, and they will be providing case management services to the households there. And then, we'll have other services on site as well because we have this amazing community center there. That community center will be available, not just to our residents, but to the surrounding community. We have Neighborhood Health Center, we'll be spending time there. Centro Cultural, we've, you know, just, we're really, really excited about the community space as well as the housing. So, Plan Beck Gardens coming soon. It'll have a hundred and sixteen apartments. It'll have two, three, and four bedroom. Half of the apartments there are going to be family-sized, and we will have three and four bedrooms there because we heard from the community that large-sized apartments were really, large-sized homes are really important for families with kids, and we wanted to make that available there. Woodland Hearth in Tigard will have about twenty-three supportive housing units, I think. The Meadowlark, we're hoping to have over twenty there. We're looking to add some additional funding to make that happen. And then, I think at Jami Court, we're looking at fifteen or twenty supportive housing units. So, again, those are going to be units that are dedicated just to people who are exiting homelessness. I want to say that at Plan Beck Gardens, we'll be opening, oops, there I am. We'll be opening the building, as I said, the first, there's two apartment buildings. The first building will be leasing in January. And we're looking to start our leasing process there with a lottery. And I want to talk a little bit about why we do that. So, we'll open up our waitlist for a couple weeks. If you are interested in getting on that waitlist, you can find me, and I'll make sure I get your contact information. But, we open up our waitlist for a couple weeks, and we get as many people on that waitlist as we can because that way, we're not, it's not about who has the time to take off from work and who can stand in line or who has access to a computer or who has access to a case manager. The idea is to really make it as equitable and open as we possibly can. We'll get that list going, we'll randomize it. We won't fill the whole community up with those names. We will probably likely lease many of our most affordable units that way. And then, after that, it will be time and date. So, that is something that we started doing three buildings ago because we had, when I first started, we did a lease-up, and we had people waiting in line for like overnight. And it was not a great way to lease up a building. We don't want, we don't ever want to have that happen again. Trying to think if there's anything else about Plan Beck that I want to say other than it's named after Doug Planbeck, who was a beloved board member of ours. Doug is there, there he is, that's why he was right next to me in the pink shirt. So, I'm at the end, and there's Doug. Doug was a founding board member, a member of, I think, St. Anthony's Church. And, no, St. Andrews. Here, yeah. It's St. Andrews, right? No, Living Savior. See, it's not even my church, but there, I remember the name. Okay, so, Living Savior, who was one of the, Living Savior is one of the churches that St. Anthony's kind of engaged with when they were starting Community Partners. Doug was our treasurer the whole, the whole time. So, he served on SEPA's board for over twenty-five years. And we really, and he was really, really, really committed to making sure that we built something here in Tuolatin. So, and, no, I think he was your, he's your neighbor, correct? So, that also helped. And I just, we feel really, we're just so pleased and excited to be able to be building here, to be able to name the building after Doug and to be offering like such a wide range of unit sizes and affordability levels at that community. So, we're pretty excited about that. I think those are my main points that I have to share with you this evening. But, I'm happy to answer any questions along with Patricia and Molly.
Well, thank you to all of our panelists. We've reached the Q and A section, and staff have prepared some questions. But, if council or members of the public have questions, we are happy to defer to you first.
Counselors. President Pratt.
I listened to a presentation that Clackamas County did about this, and they really put in my head the idea of how important wraparound services are. And so, I just would like you to speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, you bet. I mean, the reason that we do the resident services we do are because it can, as I said, the last thing we want is someone to move into our housing and then to lose that housing because something happened that, and then we could have prevented that because it's hard enough to get into affordable housing one time, but to try and get into it two times would be almost impossible. Also, it's very hard to get into affordable housing if you leave owing money as well. So, we want to just avoid all of that. So, wraparound services in some ways can mean some of those services that we're providing on-site. But, the other thing wraparound services means is that we have to have partnership with other kinds of organizations in the community. So, like SEPA, we do not provide mental health services, but many of our residents need mental health services. So, it's really important that we are working closely with Sequoia Mental Health, with Life Works, with New Narrative, with Cascadia, Native American Rehabilitation Association. We have partnerships with all of those organizations at our properties. And part of my job and my staff's job is making sure that we maintain the relationships that we need so that we can work closely with those organizations. Partnerships are important, and they take work, and they are hard work. So, the wraparound services are critical. Food security, also huge. So, it's really important for us to have good relationships with organizations that support people in their need for nutrition. We were so surprised at how big an issue food security was at both the Joyce and at Hartwood Commons. Folks were hungry, and so, we needed to find ways to make sure people had access to food.
So, in Tuolatin, would that be working like with Meals and Wheels and then somehow figuring out how, because some people, I'm sure, won't drive that live at Plan Beck Gardens. So, will there be a way to figure out how to get food pantry?
Yes.
Food to them?
Yeah, so, we will have at Plan Beck Gardens, we're going to have one resident services coordinator full-time there. And so, that person will be working closely with all of the households. And then, we're also going to have additional services just for the folks who are there because, who have, through permanent supportive housing. And then, we're also going to have this community center. And the community center will help to support some of the folks, you know, with PSH, but the permanent supportive housing, PSH is the acronym. But, we'll also be providing services to the whole, to the whole community. And so, we already have relationships that we have kind of set out through memorandums, which, you know, obviously, they're going to need more work once we actually get there. But, things like, as I said, with Neighborhood Health Center, the Neighborhood Health Clinic, they have actually the school-based clinic at Tuolatin High School. We're going to be working with Centro Cultural. We'll be working with Life Works and Cascade AIDS Project, depending on the needs of our residents. So, our goal is really to make sure, and we do, would do this at any of our communities, that we are able to support our residents. Now, what's really amazing about the Plan Beck Gardens is we have this incredible community space. And we're also really hopeful that we'll be able to provide support for, like, there's also like four hundred homes going in, three hundred, four hundred homes going in next door with Lennar. And those, we imagine that we'll be providing services, not just to our residents out of that building, but to other folks as well. And then, I do want to mention that we, our youth programming definitely works closely with the schools. So, we have had kindergarten roundups at our properties during the pandemic. We made sure to work with the schools to distribute tablets and support our families. And then, we were able, this is a particularly interesting situation at Plan Beck where the school is in Tuolatin, but the kids are in, are supposed, in the Sherwood School District, but with support from Mayor Bubanek as well as Leader Bowman of the state legislature. We were able to negotiate the opportunity for our high school students to choose to go to Tuolatin High School, which they can see from their, you know, apartment, and not have to go all the way to Sherwood High School unless they choose that, which is, so it'll be their choice, which is great. So, those are the kinds of wraparound services that we would provide and support through relationships.
Counselor Rith.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And my, one of those questions I had was using partners that we already have in our current community that people are familiar with, especially here in Tuolatin, like the food pantry and the free clinic. So, I hope that they get engaged and involved with you. My questions are more like random as I was looking at the presentation and hearing. So, whoever can answer, that's great, if, you know. So, you mentioned homeownership. And part of homeownership is that ability to create wealth and generation or like, you know, leave it to your family members as you pass away or you can actually give it to someone. And the property, property value and all that. So, my questions are on that. You mentioned that you also are intending to do that. What is, well, I don't know, I've heard it from this, I heard it from someone because I wrote it down. What is the plan for that? How does that work?
We, Washington County has an Office of Community Development, and we get some federal resources called the Community Development Block Grant. And we are able to use some of that to help create some affordable homeownership. Now, what that means is kind of a variety of different tools and kind of like our toolkit slide, same thing for homeownership. It could be something like a down payment assistance loan where someone is getting an ability to have essentially the purchase price be reduced, and their mortgage would be much reduced. And it's essentially a way for them to, it would be like a lien on their home that would go away eventually. So, it's also trying to encourage people to stay in their homes, but also that lien would go away, and that would then, that family could benefit from the full appreciation and have generational wealth. And so, that is, and generally, we look at, at least at the county level, you have to income qualify at a hundred percent of AMI or below. So, there's, we generally work with different community-based organizations. You know, there's a number of organizations like Habitat, Proud Ground, Biennestar. I don't know Vasipa. And then, there's different groups that we've been talking to that can work, that can kind of assemble different financing for folks and essentially make it a little bit cheaper for them because it's hard with how expensive it is to buy homes. But, we see a true generational benefit.
Exactly. Do you, so, on that same topic, do you give it, like, for instance, Habitat, you let Habitat pick the family or is that something that you work with? Or is just, you provide the funds to Habitat and they, and then they go out and find the family that they think will benefit from that home?
Yes, so, the Habitat model is much more like that where they're helping, they have their own set of families that they're working with, and they're putting together different subsidies to help them have a more affordable mortgage. And they are able to serve families that are around thirty-five, forty percent of area median income, so much lower than we see some other programs. And then, you have the sweat equity component to that. But, that, that tool would be more in a, more of a construction financing tool. So, it's, you're going to get money, capital resources to help build that home. And then, in exchange for that, there's a restrictive covenant on that property to make sure that other families can benefit, not just the first-time home buyers, but a generation of home buyers can continue to have affordable, affordable mortgage in those homes.
And on your goals, is that something that you say you put aside a certain amount of funds for that? Or is it like, per year, like, okay, we want a thousand families to have to eventually own their own home? Is that how it is, or is it a funding?
There's a little bit, we have some funding that we get from federal sources that goes towards these programs. And then, a lot of the community-based organizations, there's a lot of money coming from the state right now. And there's some money in metro bonds that are going towards affordable homeownership. But, maybe what I can do is, we did put together a little two-pager of that describes all the various programs. And what I can do is share that with Cody and Erin and to share that with the rest of the council.
I'd like the community to know, I mean, it won't benefit me, just me, but I mean, other than talking to people that I come across with. But, I think it'll benefit the community to know what are these homeownership programs are out there that they can try to apply for. The other one is, I know prioritizing and trying to get, be equitable on getting people to be on, specifically the Plan Beck or any of these metro bond properties. When, here in Tuolatin, we already have a lot of families that are under the rental burden or they're, they've been waiting for things like a property that's built because they have kids that are still in school here. They started in elementary, now they're probably in middle school or even high school. And so, they're not ready to move out of the city. How are they, are there going to be, is there a way to promote to them once this, once the list is open or whenever people, whenever you're ready to open Plan Beck? How are you going to select the residents?
So, we're going to do a lot of marketing. We have to create affirmative, we have to create, like, we're required to create what we call an affirmatively fair housing marketed plan. But, we're, we generally have a lot of, we have relationships with a lot of the organizations that are here, and we will send information to organizations that
And we will send information to organizations that, community-based organizations that we're leasing up. And we'll also publish information in different papers. I mean, we will really work hard and we always do it in different languages. So I think right now we're looking at English, Spanish, Swahili, Russian, and I think maybe Korean, I'm not sure if I can. So tell me if you think I'm missing an important language. But though, so we're gonna, you know, we do a big wide, a big wide advertising. Yeah, I mean, library, when you say library, you mean like, just have it posted there, yeah.
And would it be promoted to the 18,000 people that are already on the waitlist first? Or, I mean, are you listening?
Yes, let's do it. Yes, Molly said I can.
I'm just wondering if there, if there are any people from Tuolotin that are in that 18,000 waitlist? I'm sure there are, but.
I do believe we have, we have that data to show where people are currently staying, where they're applying for that resource. So I could, I think I could disaggregate the data and also provide that.
I think though, one of the things that you're raising is, it is, I mean, every building has its own waitlist. It is very difficult to court, I'll say this, on my dream list is to find a way that we are coordinating so that the community can easily see or try to get to, or so like at least in a singular place, see where the units are, what the affordability levels are. And like, it's, right now it's completely fragmented, like it's all, every unit building. And so it's hard if you're thinking about it as a community in particular. So I'm just raising that this, it's a challenge now, it's not great, generally speaking. I know you're all agree to do a fantastic job with, you know, identifying folks, but it's challenging.
It is, we used to, a long time ago, have a resource that was online. It was, I think that was, it may have been as long as 20, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, that you could actually just get on and see. And that, but that, it wasn't maintained and it didn't take long to be out of date.
And while people are waiting, are you helping them? And I'm just curious. And like I said, a lot of these questions are just curious because they were popping out of my brain when you were giving your presentations. So it's not like I have a specific structure of questions. Is that something you like, I'm just wondering, like people are waiting. And I, I'm from LA, so I've seen this since I was a little girl. So I've seen people waiting two, three, four years and they're struggling in one tiny apartment that someone is renting their room for them. You know, so it's like, it's a lot of burden on the kids and the families. So I'm just wondering if, what's the, what's the plan while they wait?
I can, from the, so as the implementer of the supportive housing services measure, we have helped build out a full shelter and a whole continuum, everything from pod villages to different hotels and motels to congregate shelters. So kind of a variety of shelters. But the problem is, you need people to move out of the shelter. And you need, what we really need is more permanent housing. But really, but you need both. It's not, it's not an either/or. But the beauty of the supportive housing services measure is you can pivot as you see where people are getting stuck. So if you're sitting there in shelter for a long time and really you need a case manager and you have a rent assistance local voucher, what we call a local rent assistance, that you can move into private sector housing and you don't have to wait for an affordable housing waitlist, because we are not so nimble on that front. We're actually been, we've been more successful in getting folks into private sector housing from homelessness with our rent assistance voucher and the case manager tool along with them. So you can pivot if people are getting stuck and say, we actually need now more case managers or housing navigators, because we need to make sure people have a pathway for them to go. Because then folks who are coming in from, say, the camps, they have a pod village and then maybe from there they can move into a different sort of housing setting. So it is, it is a very coordinated system that we're trying to create. So we're trying to reduce the amount of time people are spent experiencing homelessness. Now, that doesn't resolve the issue that you're raising, which is these long waitlists that happens in affordable housing, because we're more or less, we're required to have some kind of process for people to come in. But generally, what we're seeing, a lot of those providers, they're having people stay in the shelters until something comes up.
So first, they, they have to be in this waiting, sorry, I'm questioning, but I just try to understand your whole process. Because I think people get stuck in the process and not sure what to do. I'm even not, I don't know what to do if I would lose my home. Like, what do I do first?
Call two-on-one.
Right, I'm familiar with two-on-one, but, you know.
It's not working.
Okay.
Thank you.
They, they don't promise nothing, but they don't answer nothing.
Okay.
The same for electricity, for rain, anything. I'm so sorry, for me it's not working.
Thank you for sharing that, that there is a system issue we need to work on and capacity with two-on-one. In Washington County, we also have Community Connect. And I would recommend also going to the Community Action Organization. They have a lot of eviction prevention resources and they're able to connect to other, to other shelter systems. But Community Connect, and then what they do is people go through some kind of assessment. What kind of housing, what kind of services do you really need? There's case conferencing. And then we're trying to place people, what their appropriate intervention is for them and that time. So I highly recommend, I think there is a website and also a phone number for Community Connect that we can share too.
Right, and I raise these questions because these are the questions that I do hear from the community, just like the woman that just spoke up right now. It is almost, I have family members waiting on these kinds of, you know, waiting lists. And it's, it's really a burden and I don't, and that's why I'm wondering, how do you process people faster? And how do you provide resources to them so they can, they can get to these places that are being opened? So I'm raising those questions, raising those questions not because I'm just challenging you, but it is a Metro Bond and you do want to extend this in the future. So you want us to continue to pay these, continue the bond and pay the levy and everything you want to do to continue this fund. And, but it, there's some, something's not working. There's something's being, there's something there that is not making people go through the process faster or supporting them faster. And I don't know what that is. I'm not the expert, but I know there's something, because I hear it all the time in my community. And I just, I mean, I'm sure it's everywhere, but I don't know what that is. And I think that's not my job to figure out, but I feel like there's something stuck. And homeownership is another thing that I think people should be more aware of. And I just, because I don't always want people to be in the system. We want to get them out of the system. And so there's a lot going on that it seems easy, and I like bullet points, but there's things behind the bullet points that are not being, somehow there's, there's some, something there that's not functioning that are, we have a lot of people still waiting, kids still there being displaced, or bouncing around from hotel to hotel, from a room to another room. And that is a lot of stress on the families. And so that's why I'm just wondering, like, how do you get this? How do you get into a housing unit as easy as possible? And I don't know if it's the vetting process, who needs it the most and all that. So I'm just, that's why as you were giving the presentation, those questions were coming to me and I wrote them down. I mean, other than that, I don't know what else to tell you. I'm just giving you voices from my community. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Sacco, then Counselor Hillier.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Reyes, for all your questions you asked, that are very spot on. So kind of along those lines, my question was for Molly, and I have a sort of a statement after that too. But Molly, you talked about equitable practices. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about those equitable practices, kind of along the lines of what Counselor Reyes was saying, sort of how do we get like the most vulnerable people housed first? And those equitable practices, what do those look like?
Yeah, we're, we're still trying to figure all that out. We're, it's a journey, not a sprint, for sure. But we are definitely looking as much as we possibly can at trying to give more voice to vulnerable populations to help tell us how these policies and programs are affecting them. So we've kind of restructured a lot of our advisory bodies. And we now have different committees for people with lived experiences to really start grappling with some of these policy issues. We just had two listening sessions, the first time we've ever had listening sessions. We've gone out in the community, people experiencing homelessness. And also a lot of providers came and they told us the different issues that they're facing in the system. So we're, and then that sort of helps us with our budget planning and trying to figure out what, either what do we need to do differently? Or what populations are getting most access to our programs and which ones are not? And that is starting to look at more data too. And so who's, who's getting into the housing? So we are, in general, we see communities of color having a harder time getting into affordable housing. And we see the biggest gaps in homeownership for communities of color. So let's just take that, what do we need to do differently around, there's access, but then there's retention. So we're just looking at all of our various policies right now. Frankly, we have a lot we still have to develop. We have a lot of things that are still very much works in progress, because for the most part, we're a very brand-new sort of management team, leadership team. So we're here wanting to have a sort of a different conversation with a lot of folks.
Well, thank you for being here. And I very much look forward to learning about what you find out, and especially around that, that access piece. Because, you know, we only know from the folks that we're hearing from and we all know that there's population out there that need help that we don't hear from. And I just want to say too, that, you know, I understand this meeting is required, but I don't want it to be just like a checkbox. That, and I know that our council and our leadership, we do a lot of work on housing. But, you know, this is such an important topic. And one of the things that was brought up, the, that adopt different development standards, such as zoning development codes, STC requirements. And we've done some work on that already, but super interested in learning about what else we can do as far as policymaking. I think about our core area in our urban renewal district, because that area is close to transportation and jobs and what we can do to, when we look at like the zoning for that and developing that area. I think that's a great place for affordable housing. Thank you, everybody, for your presentations.
Thank you, everyone, for the presentations. And I'll make mine very quick, because we have a huge body of the community here and I feel like they should get to be heard. So I'll just say what my questions are and maybe I can follow up later. But my questions are for the SEPA project and in general, what about the transportation plans for that? I'd like to hear what the partnerships are for TRIMET and all the other things going on there. Number two, a third of our community lives in Clackamas County and I'm trying to understand where they're represented in this conversation. And so I'm hoping that maybe we can have an additional conversation with Clackamas County leaders, or if that's an appropriate thing, I understand Metro. And the third thing is, from the Metro, I understand the bonds and things. But if we're talking about the highest rents are being paid in Washington County and the highest homeownership costs are in Clackamas County, and then you're going to ask those, those potentially vulnerable populations to, you know, keep upping for more bonds and different things. I know that you're adding to a toolbox right now, but thinking about what the costs are already right now for the people who may be on the edge already. So I'd just like you to keep that in mind and make sure that this is not, to Counselor Sacco and Counselor Reyes's points, that this is not the only one of those conversations. Because my goodness, you know, we don't want that percentage to go from 44 up. We need it to go down, right? And so again, I think the community should get to speak now, but those are my questions and I'm happy to follow up later with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for coming and talking about this conversation. I do, one thing, the first thing is, I've watched here from, as a service provider, as well as a person elected, at what this region's facing. And so I do want to say, I really applaud the work that, the thing with Metro, being able to get this housing bond, is a very unusual thing nationally. And I had a chance to talk about it at the National League of Cities, because by putting these three counties together needs, we can get a bigger ask and a bigger lift for our greater metro region. So I just want to say that first. And I know there's a lot of baby stuff and this has been a very quick-growing community. And then I also think, just for Doug Planbex's memory, he was a mentor to a lot of people in our community, including myself. And I don't think that I could go further without saying that that church here and that other church were in partnership when it was founded. So we do have roots of SEPA right here in Tuolotin. And I just had to say it. I keep thinking about different things. First of all, when we have our housing build-out goals reported by the county, how does it benefit our voters to be voting to reduce our services that we need to keep people in place to go to development of new properties that don't necessarily satisfy our needs? And how do we retain a fair amount of money in our county? Because the reason why we're in this position is because we did a really good job. So how do we get rewarded and stay on track with being on track in this model that you're suggesting?
Thank you for the question. So a couple of, I think I can address a couple of things. First of all, this is not an increase. And so I would not be asking the voters for more money at this time. And we've also committed to not reduce any, any of the funding that's currently being used for services. So we would not be looking at a reduction. That's not something that Metro Council has, they've been very specific, that this is not something that they're interested in, is they want to maintain the stability of the programs. And what we're talking about when we are talking about adding that as a tool, there's a lot of choice, which currently, the way that the program is designed, and this is true for both SHS as well as the bond, is that we fund the jurisdictions. So we fund cities and counties who then make the decisions on how those resources are used.
They don't fund cities in Washington County, other than.
Hillsboro?
Hillsboro and Beaverton, but the rest of the cities in Washington County, the money flows to Washington County.
Correct, right. But I'm just saying, in terms of the partnerships, my point is Metro doesn't deliver any of it on its own. Except for the TODD program. We have a transit-oriented development program that mixes federal dollars with 10% of the bond dollars. And those, those funds are already expensed. But my point is, is that there is, there is not any, there's not any intention, nor does council want to risk destabilizing anything that we currently have. And the housing component would be for folks that we are serving with SHS. So the how, we're talking about the most vulnerable. We're talking about the, how do we continue to build deeply affordable housing? Because we don't have any other resource. I mean, as soon as this is gone, I don't know how we're going to actually continue to build at that deep level of affordability. We're going to see a significant reduction in the pipeline. So our hope would be that we continue to actually thoughtfully pair housing with services from the get-go. I think it's honestly a dream that a lot of folks have had in this work for a long time is, can we have an integrated system? Because to the point of, why is it so hard to like access the service, get on the waitlist? It is because it is completely decentralized and fragmented. There is an opportunity to better integrate and to like connect those dots in a way that works for folks. And we have to be very cautious to not, to not destabilize. We'd have to be very, I'll just say sober, about how we think about any changes that we would move forward.
Okay, and then the second, the other, next question I have, and what you've said dovetails beautifully into my thoughts on this. Being somebody with a master's in social work, coming here and looking at how this area is resourced with, I was just talking to a psychologist the other day, who has her doctorate, who was talking about she wishes she would have gotten her master's in social work because it's a much more portable and flexible degree. And we don't have a big school here of social work which can help with not only treatment provision, housing provision and all that, plus having a study, when you have somebody working on their master's and their doctorate in this degree, you have resources for studying these areas, for making those coordinated systems that you're talking about, and for capturing funds from grants and other things as institutional foundation for the area. And so I'm just wondering, has there been any advocacy to get a social work program here at like PSU or a place that is a bigger urban integrated? here at like PSU, or a place that is a bigger urban integrated university?
I can start and then invite my colleagues to hop in. So we do have, you know, there is, so Portland State would have a School of Social Work, and as well as, I think, George Fox Specific, there are several different programs in the area that have social work. However, I think one thing that we have, that I completely want to just underscore that you've mentioned, is we have a, we have a pipeline problem, where we don't have enough clinicians, for example, like in the behavioral health system. It's not, it's not an issue of like, open the bed and it will happen. It's like, we need clinicians that are able to deliver that work. And why are, why do we have that shortage? Because they can't afford to live here, right? It's like, so I think it's, it's a really tough situation where we don't have that affordability. It bumps, it bumps into folks that we need moving into the region to be able to deliver services. So one of the things that, through, through SHS, that we're doing from the perspective of regionalizing the work, is creating, so we're exploring like kind of certification programs, so that we're able to bring in folks to be social workers, to make it more accessible, to be able to deliver those, those services in a variety of areas. So we're doing that research right now, of what options do we have? There are examples of where other communities are doing this currently. But it's, it's more than just like the social work field, it's also the behavioral health world, which is, it's, you know, so it's, it's complicated.
Social workers work in behavioral health as well.
True.
So, and they can be qualified to do that. They do not need a specific other degree. And there's, there's so much splitting apart there. And I will say that especially for a community practice, we had ours right next to the Center for Urban Development, so planning and community prac, and social work were right next to each other, and we're such a resource for nonprofits, for, for governments, et cetera, et cetera. So I really think there's a need here for a more stood-up educational program that actually has the flexibility to reach all of these service populations, including integrating with policy and larger conversations about society. My next question is, when you were talking about, I, I think the other thing to talk about is the, the person I would have liked to have seen here today as well is, is Brian, Brian Guinea?
From HUD.
From HUD.
From HUD, yeah.
And the reason why is because I am on the PAB, and we know that we, if, when community development block grants were passed, there was a vision of how much money should come from those, and we're not even at half of what it should be. So we're not capturing our federal dollars, we're not having a specific advocacy plan to do that. And in my mind, it's kind of shameful to be the wealthiest country in the world and to not be able to house people. So how are we integrating, not just with this region here, but with the state and the federal government, to increase funding? That goes with the same with universities, maybe we have a sister project, et cetera. And then the third thing I didn't really hear about, that I'd like to hear more about, is how do you make living in an area like this, that's rent burdened, less expensive? So we just had this, you know, Greater Portland Inc. conversation, where they're going to build a, or they bought the land for the baseball place and field, and diamond. And there's not going to be any parking there. So in my mind, these groups should be advocating with our transportation, like how do we leverage getting ticket, you know, season ticket holders down there without their cars here in these communities, but also at the same time, provide reasonable solutions for people that are struggling with staying housed or are on the streets, so that their cost of living can go down. And what other ways can we do that without a dependency issue, like you were talking about, where we're getting people dependent on the system? That being said, I don't want to say that I don't understand people that have clinical needs, long-term health issues. I don't think that people even can understand, there's a pretend conversation around people not wanting to be housed, when we look at these long, long waiting lists, that's just a lot of bunk. And it, it makes me so upset, because anybody can have a catastrophic illness, and it's a very traumatic thing to walk through. And people really deserve dignity and respect, not shaming kind of behaviors and discussions. So, but that, that's, those questions, too, like how are we leveraging these conversations to help support that metro money that should have come in and been supported by the business community, to do that third part of the stool, as far as getting light rail and transportation? I'll say one thing, a young person just recently told me, is they put in AI, what's the best transportation? And it came out train. And then they put all these limiting factors in, and it still came out train. People don't want to take the bus. I don't know anybody that wants to sit on a bus. If we put in a bus lane, we should have tracks, and we should make these things accessible for all of our community, not just specific parts of our community, this part, this eastern part of Washington County. These are, these are resources we don't have. We're excited about SEPA coming in. Hopefully, we can have a satellite, too, for the county here, because that's another thing. You're supposed to take a three-hour bus ride to get to get help, or go to court, or, so these things are real issues in our community. And I just want to put a plug for the Family Promise, because they have one of the best clinical directors, or HAG, I guess she's leaving, but they have good turnaround. So if somebody's finding themselves without housing, they are putting people into housing and having temporary housing. And the other thing is, we should have learned from the pandemic, is no more congregational housing. There's no dignity or respect in that, it's not safe, and it's not a way for people to trust their government and their care providers. I really appreciate you guys coming, I'm passionate about it, thank you.
I'm just going to have a point, quick ask of Metro, of Ms. Rojas. The frustration that the mayors are having with the discussion about next year's bond is that Metro is actually in discussion with the three county chairs, but none of the mayors. None of the cities are involved in the conversation about the tinkering of this measure that's you're proposing, put on the ballot next year. We've been in conversations with President Peterson, with Juan Carlos, with Councilor, most of, most of the counter, the commissioner, commissioners, the councillors at Metro, and there's a frustration, I just wanted you to take this back, because I'll say it to Lynn every time, we're not happy. Most city councillors have no idea what you're talking about, with the change of the bond, because you haven't come out to the cities to talk about it. You're talking to three chairs, I know the three chairs are not happy with the discussions as far as they're going so far. So I'd like to get more feedback, comments, and communication going between Metro, the cities, on this bond measure, because if it goes on the bond, and you have a lack of support from the leaders of the communities, you're going to have an uphill battle passing this bond. All right. With that, I want to open it to the floor, we've talked a lot here. Does someone sign up? And then I'll take Marissa, who signed up, and then we'll take.
Anyway, what I'd like to say, as I'm an observer, and I'm listening, what they're saying. Or am I loud enough?
Nope, Mike, it's got to go to Zoom land.
I'm Marissa Holberg, and I'm a resident of Tuolleton. I've been an observer this evening, and I'm seeing, listening to the presentations, I'm a little hard of hearing, so some things I may miss. And these folks, I know from 20, over 20 years of experience, taking the effort to come to a counseling event, you're invited, you said there's information to share, these folks had the drive and care to be here, listen to you. The only person that I heard say something that I thought was positive for them, was they could talk to Rachel. And that's uplifting. That makes you feel like you've made a connection, and that there's some sort of hope, and some sort of action that you can help make. Molly and Patricia, I realize you're involved in bureaucracy, and that's what's frustrating, and that's a goal. And you have no one, I feel, that you are able to, and I think you'd like to, but be able to give these folks a name of a person and a number, or an email address, or some way to take action. Thank you for your time.
We do have one member that signed up ahead of time, Rebecca Morgan.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Rebecca Morgan, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Hello, Metro and Washington County and SEPA. And thank you, Cootie, and for helping me get here. I was not going to share this section, but since Councilor Reyes brought up these questions about how does this happen, and what we do, I decided I will share my, my personal story. I'll try to read through it quickly, because I have a couple of pages, so please, I will read. Thank you so much. So you can? Yes, can you hear me? This is not, this is not, this is not. Hello. Hi, you can hear me now. Hi, good evening, my name is Rebecca Morgan. The first time my family became homeless was in February of 2020, just before the pandemic began to impact our community. Without transportation, we packed up what we could carry, and we spent over 100 days living in various motels, before finally securing a rental in Washington County. But it took months to acquire basic furnishings and other items to make the space feel like home. Our family continued to struggle with job losses and unemployment, and sadly, my mom passed away as well during that time. Trying to find a way out of our situation, we reached out for rental assistance. Our landlord graciously accepted the relief, but then wanted his condo back. The relief was actually intended to be an addiction prevention measure. With no support to help us relocate, we packed up our belongings for storage, and due to no-fault eviction, in exactly two years, two days, my family found ourselves homeless for the second year. We spent the next 30 days in campgrounds and motels before we could find placement in a family shelter. From there, we were connected with the help of a housing navigator, through to the Rapid Rehousing Program, which subsidized our rent for a year, allowing us to secure an apartment here in Tuolleton. Determined to build connections in my community, I became a volunteer with the Community Emergency Response Team and joined IDEA Committee. Recognizing the need for childcare, I drew upon my experience running a daycare in California to establish one here, as a way to provide stability and also get back to my community. One year after moving to Tuolleton, and with the help and support of ERCO and Central Cultural, to nonprofit organizations in this county, I became a licensed registered home daycare provider, and my program does accept PRDC and keeps its rates in line with my PRDC to keep the new market rate. Unfortunately, at the same time, our housing assistance ended, leaving us responsible for housing costs that now totaled $2,500 per month. This amount was impossible to cover with no children enrolled yet, and our only income being candid and adoption assistance, which were youth's vision of community life. My family faced eviction once more. Instead of focusing on starting my daycare services, I was forced to worry about how we would keep our apartment. Thankfully, Central Cultural provided rental assistance to call the eviction, covering past due and future payments, rent payments. And this support allowed me to enroll children, support families while they work, and I am proud to say, become self-sufficient, though not without remaining rent burdened. Tuolleton is considered a severely met burdened city, with 30% of its residents spending more than half of their income on rent. For a house, and also, also that includes mortgage payments as well. For families with young children, childcare is the second largest expense after housing, and in many US cities, childcare costs even surpass rent. The lack of accessible and affordable childcare further intensifies in financial stress, making it difficult for families to balance work and school while maintaining household stability. A solution to alleviate rent burdens involves a multifaceted approach. Affordable housing projects like Plan Bait Gardens are a step in the right direction, offering affordable units and wraparound services that benefit the community. Through partnerships with organizations like Central Cultural, which supports my efforts to expand affordable childcare options to enhance these services, specifically like Plan Bait, by the way. I am currently seeking funding through the Childcare Infrastructure Fund, CCIF, to develop a certified childcare center near Plan Bait Gardens, and welcome collaboration or assistance in connecting with additional partners to help bring this vision to life. While increasing the number of affordable housing units is essential, it's not enough on its own. We need to ensure that families have access to a comprehensive network of support, including affordable childcare options, rental relocation assistance, addiction prevention programs, and emergency funds for those of us facing unexpected financial setbacks. Additionally, offering services such as financial literacy programs, job training, mental health support, transportation assistance, and employment opportunities that provide equitable wages can address the broader challenges that families do face. Household stability is directly linked to economic mobility and overall community well-being. If families have and individuals have stable, affordable housing, and families have access to quality, affordable childcare, they are better positioned to pursue education, secure higher-gaining jobs, and contribute positively for their local economy. By investing in a comprehensive support system, we can provide families with the resources that they need, not just to survive, but to also thrive, becoming active participants in the community and fostering a more inclusive and resilient environment. As we work toward developing more mid-range housing eventually, options that bridge the gap between affordable and market-rate housing, we create opportunities for families to achieve financial stability, build equity, and ultimately even realize the dream of homeownership, of homeownership. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm hopeful that by coming together, we can create a Tuolleton where families not only have to live over their heads, but also have an opportunity to build a brighter and more secure community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Others with questions or comments? Don't be shy. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Trish Brisboy, Tuolleton resident, part of Clackamas County. I can't, because I have a 22-year-old who lives in a low-income apartment here in Tuolleton, and we're grateful that that was able to happen for him. But more than half of his take-home pay goes to rent. It's crazy. So I realize that, yeah, it's not like when I was 18 and could rent a little studio apartment and work at McDonald's, it's not like that anymore. And so I'm optimistic, I loved hearing a lot of the stuff, but you know, I, I know it's one thing to talk about it, it's another thing to do it. And it's wonderful that they're opening the new Plan Bait apartments, but my gosh, only 116 units? So is there a plan for Tuolleton to have another low-income apartment house built? Or more projects like this? I mean, I have, I've seen so many good things happening lately in Tuolleton, I just have a lot of faith that, you know, good, more good can happen. But it does seem like a huge problem, and love to see more of this good stuff going on. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up.
But I don't want to go on, bro. You're fine.
You're fine?
They just like. Come on. Okay, I'll sit, you sit in front of the mic right here.
You gotta go to this one.
Oh, this one, over here.
Welcome.
Hi, I went to my eviction court today. I've been asking for help from Centro Cultural. The girl Friday, she was supposed to do an appointment, and she's like, I have an emergency call. So she just leave me out of nowhere, so I was like, I'm scared, I don't know what to do. And like, I think that should do a better job, like, if there's an emergency call, hey, can you call somebody, they're going through a hard time, they're scared. I have four kids, well, one go to college. My husband lost his job, so it's kind of hard. Like, I don't want to lose apartment, I have kids.
So have you followed up with them again, or?
Well, that Well, that was Friday, so I called them today. They're like, "Oh, can you send the paper from court?" I did, but they don't give me a call back or anything. And I'm freaking out, I'm like, "I don't know what to do." Like, I'm expecting, okay, I went to court, can you give me a call, say something, or?
Do you have any emergency contacts, I think?
I can help you with that.
So Centro Cultural has the biggest contract for eviction prevention. I would keep calling them every single day.
And I think it's kind of like, at the same time, you have to wait until you get eviction notice, your kid's looking at the door and the papers. It's like, why do you have to wait so long to get the help? It's like, I have to choose, like, buy close for my four kids to go to school or rent. My husband lost his job.
So that there, obviously, there needs to be more rent assistance in this community. So that is the biggest, and the biggest benefit of the Supportive Housing Services Measure is rent assistance, but we know that it's not enough. We also are trying to put some towards eviction prevention. We're putting a lot more into rent assistance because it's the much better solution for long term. The issue, of course, is housing and income is two sides of the same coin. We have to work on both together because you can only do so much on rising housing costs. We also have to help people have income and have benefits and have living wage jobs. So it is a combination. There is community action organization, and I will get phone numbers when I get to my phone, but also.
Since I contacted Centro Cultural, I didn't want to contact the other one. I was like, "I'm just going to wait for an answer from the other one."
But at some point, you need help. So I guess if there's a point where Centro Cultural, say, within the next week, can't help you, I would, there's no reason not to contact the other. I, we, you know, next time we come, we'd love to go deeper on our homelessness system. It seems like that's, you know, very much, we're focusing a little bit more on housing production tonight, but I definitely am hearing that we want to spend more time on that emergency response because people need relief today.
Because one of, I know during COVID, and I don't know if it's changed, community action had that point, made the point that not until you serve the papers did the process start, which seemed insane. But that's how the rules worked and how the funding worked. I know it's scary as hell.
Yeah, my older kid is like, "What happened, Mom? What happened in court? What happened?" I'm like, "Well, they gave me till the 25th to see if Centro Cultural answers," or something, but I don't know. I don't even know what to tell my kids.
I also think that having someone that they can talk to and say, "Hey," you know, I think a lot of the times is what she's saying, "I haven't heard, and what's going on?" Like, you can't just leave people not knowing what's going to happen or no comfort of something. I think that's another, that's what I see and I hear all the time. And it is degrading to hear that you are being, you have to get evicted in order for you to get assistance. That is so wrong. And because we go home and we have our own, you know, we go home and we have our house, but on the other side of the coin, there's so many need that an hour for them, a day for them, it's a lot more than just a day for me. So I think that that's, not hearing from the other side and just leaving her in the dark, that's not a good customer service.
Can I say something? Hi, I'm Lorena, I live in Tuolatin. So thank you so much for your time. And this is where we are, when we are in struggle for money. So if we call 211, that's the best place for giving a chance, the numbers for call. If you need a lost you day for calling and calling and calling, that's the perfect number. The other thing, if we call for help, I'm feeling, I'm feeling like a, like I made mistake. I make, and the rural son is 10:52 per hour. So I cannot pay $1,300, the rent, 500 electricity. I don't know why Tuolatin is too expensive. It's 550 for two bedrooms, and that's it. No more people use me. And they send a lot, papers and papers and papers and paper, fill it up, and I call later, I call tomorrow, and I can sleep, I can eat. I'm fat because of my stress, not because I eat a lot. I can sleep, I cry, I don't want to work, I want to use, say, I want to pass away because I'm tired about calling and trying to somebody help. Nobody listen to us. This is, we are a girl. So like I should say, the kids, four kids. What happened with the kids in the school? The kids in the school sometimes say, "Mom, my mom, she need a rent. My mom, we going to the street, we going be homeless."
At first, I was trying to hide the papers, but they opened the door, and they just leave it like that for everybody to see it. So it's like, I think we need a little bit of privacy, and they leave it like that so you can see, notice eviction. And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." So they open the door and they saw it, I'm like.
I lost my car because I cannot pay anymore my car. My rent is, they raised my rent like a, a couple months ago. I received a letter again in December, they add $100 more dollars. I can be homeless, yes, but I mean, I cannot necessarily be homeless. I'm human. So please, try to help and come, we are a girl. Those, we are a girl. So that part, try to solve them too many things, but it's not like you say numbers and numbers and numbers, and that's beautiful. My dad, he pass away, wait, at least for the apartment. He pass away, they never, they were more than 10 years waiting, and they never call you. So that sounds so beautiful, everything. Thank you so much, pero please come to our girl, please. Thank you so much, thank you. I hope she have a good help because that's so hard for listen to us. They send, "Go to the court, go to the court. When you go, go to the court, please call." Please, I'm in the court. Okay, we call maybe later and the next week, but they called, they didn't call to us. Really.
This is the input we need to hear because we have folks who have, who are, you know, talk to those folks all the time with contracts, and we want to make sure we are hearing, especially around customer service and response rates. If there are things we can do to help, we will want to make those, we want to do that work so we are as efficient as possible. We don't want to have people go through an eviction.
And I don't have nothing against teenagers because I do have two teenagers, but I think to put teenagers on the phone is like the biggest mistakes, or like kids that don't even know what's going on in life. Like Centro Cultural is, I think the girl that answered the phone and she said, "Oh, I have an emergency," when we had an appointment, maybe she was around 20 or 20-something, so she doesn't care. She doesn't know what's going on. So I think they need more mature people to know what's going on instead of teenagers, you know?
So why don't I give you your, I would love to get your guys' information before you go, and if it's possible, is it Morgan, is it? Rebecca Morgan? Rebecca, would you be willing to email us your testimony?
I just also wanted to say you guys are doing all the right things.
Yeah.
So you're not doing anything wrong. That's really important.
Thank you. The best thing for me today is somebody listen because I lost my hope, really. I lost my hope. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you for being with us.
Counselor Brooks.
I really appreciate you guys coming tonight, too, and listening to what you're talking about. And I have a question, too, because this is, some of the things that came up to me when we were starting the new navigation program regionally is I didn't realize it was just measuring what we need. And in my mind, you know, we need something like a regional, almost like a therapist, case, resource and referral person. When you're talking about somebody that's having thoughts of suicide, when you're talking about this, this system beating people down to the point where, I mean, we all know that safety is the bottom of the hierarchy of needs, right? So it's not about how nice we are to each other and stuff. It's about, do I have a house? Do I have food? And this is the struggle. So I'm just curious why we can't have something from the county that's more like a regional coordinator that if something's not working, just like a therapist would advocate, a case manager would advocate for a client, why don't we have community services that could advocate? Or if somebody's running into a wall with one organization, could help report it out, could be the liaison between all these services? Because that seems to be where this big disconnect is between the people. We went through it during COVID, right? When nobody would pick up the phone, when people were freaking out and they were just backlogged with the phone and they didn't have anyone to talk to. And I just, I think it's the worst thing to do is to say, "We have these services for you, but they don't work." Or it's like, it's like a nightmare dream, you know? They don't work. And we all think that the services, you know, we see the presentations, and we're not seeing all services, but these situations, I just feel like we need more advocacy regionally to make sure that there's a bridge to these services that is connected. And this is why I don't want to see losing any social services. It's not working.
It's not working, no.
We just, we really don't have the infrastructure yet. The need came fast, so I mean, I'm not, but it's not working.
It's not working. Even community action is not working.
All right. Any other comments? I appreciate you all coming up. It takes a lot of courage.
Thank you.
Susan.
Good evening. You all know me, for Metro and Washington County. My name is Susan Noak. I've lived in Tuolatin since 2001. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce and lead our Business Advocacy Committee, and I also chair the Tuolatin Aging Task Force. We're an ad hoc committee that looks after our seniors and advocate for our seniors in the community. Our tagline for the seniors in our community is, "What's good for the, for our seniors is good for our community." So we watch this issue. And I want to commend every one of you for tonight. I had a long list of things that I was concerned about. You answered most of my questions. Thank you. Counselors, I just appreciate everything you brought up tonight, every one of you. I check things off my list because you already asked the question. I do have a couple. I was on the Tuolatin Housing Committee in 2022, '23. We ended the committee in the spring of '23 with a 50-page report from the consultants. They did a great job, but until tonight, I'd not heard anything more about it. Unfortunately, at the end of the, our season of being on the committee, there were only four of us out of about 10 that were left on the committee, so it was really hard to make decisions and statements. So I was disappointed in that. I'm not disappointed in tonight. We have a silent population in Tuolatin, and it's not just seniors. It's everybody. I address seniors. I'm a senior, obviously, but I look after seniors. I'm learning from our counselor's other life that I was a founding director of Lake Oswego Together back in '93. I know that committee. It makes me sad that we still have it. It makes me glad that we still have it. There's a whole nother population in our community that is unheard and unseen, and those are our children who are couch surfing and experiencing this that they have no control over. And we have seniors who are being devastated by rent in this community. And the government, the state government says, "Well, you can raise your rents as of January 1. You can raise them 10% max." I'm really fortunate, and I know it every day. I don't have issues. I don't have health issues. I don't have financial issues. I'm not rich. I make it work, but I'm few and far between anymore. And I have so many senior friends. We advocate for seniors' mobility. We, our task force is doing a survey right now in our senior community on mobility. If you don't have mobility, you can't do anything else. We don't have good mobility here. We don't have good housing here. We don't, we have nutrition insecurities. We all, and you know all this, but you still need to hear it. And you need to hear it from somebody like me who just, who lives in town and doesn't have the issues that I see every day, and we try our best to counter them. And you are, you're doing a great job. But one thing I want to know, and I ask this on other committees that I've been on in this city, if Washington County and Metro, and especially Washington County, oversee whatever that pot of money is that gets distributed, how do we know as a community, and I hope the counselors in the city know, but how do we know exactly how much we can, we're going to receive, exactly where it's going to go, and who it's going to benefit? And we don't hear that. We don't, also, we don't hear, we don't hear about your resources and where to call. That you're, forgive me for saying this, but you all have lousy marketing skills. That's my career. And, and I'm going to say it out loud, you do. The city's getting better at it. But if you don't publicize it, if you don't shout it, if you don't put it in the city newsletter once a month, if you don't put it in Tuolatin Life, if you don't put it in the Chamber Newsletter, if you don't put flyers in the schools or in the library, how do we know about these things? How do the people that need to know, how do they know? And you've got to do a better job of marketing and outreach and information so this doesn't happen anymore. This is shameful. I'm sorry. I'm not an emotional person, and I'm so lucky that I have what I have and that I can sit here calmly and say, "I'm good," and find out so many people aren't good. And they're but for the grace of God, could be me, who knows? Could be any of us. So we have to do better. We just have to do better. And I am begging you all to do better. You're doing a lot now, but unfortunately, you're going to have to do more, and you're going to have to do better. Tuolatin is an aging community. People can't afford to move in here. It's too expensive to live here. But I represent the workforce. They can't afford to live here, which means our employers can't get employees to come work here, which is going to be a detriment to our community. It's just a huge circle. This is the worst part of the circle, right here in this room, right now, what we're talking about. It really is. And it makes me sad, it truly does, makes me angry. Most of you know how loud my voice is most of the time. And I've been known to pound the table every now and then and fight, and I do fight for what I think is right. And I think the Aging Task Force is, in our October meeting, we're going to have a little meeting of the minds because our focus has to be bigger. We have a loud voice and we have a far reach, and we're not reaching enough. We don't know where our seniors live. We don't know who is rent and food insecure. We don't have the resources to find out. We obviously don't know who our residents in the community are and who are rent and food insecure. How do we find out? Do we have to call one by one, or do a block party, or? I don't know. I'm just saying, we should know. That's part of running a city. That's part of all of us being good citizens in a city, is to know these things. So I will offer, the Chamber is always here to help. You might not think all the issues in this room tonight are business-oriented, but they are. Absolutely. We advocate for business, and in order to advocate for business, we have to advocate for our community, and we try our best to do that. The Aging Task Force is the same way. We, seniors are first and foremost in our minds, but like I said, if it's good for me, it's good for you, and it's good for a six-year-old or younger because it's for the benefit of the community. Reach out to all of us who are willing to help and can help. That's what we're here for, too. Thank goodness we have a council and a mayor and a city staff that is participating and understand it. Thank goodness Rachel, Rachel was on the Housing Committee with me, and I learned so much then. Doug Planbeck was on the Aging Task Force. What a role model. And thank goodness we have these partners sitting around this table and in the audience who care about Tuolatin, and let's protect it and help it and make sure we move forward. Let's not go back. Okay? Thank you very much.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you for your time. I'm Anne Green. I'm a relatively new Twallington resident. I've been here a couple years. I love it here. And I want to say that I love your presentations, and I love everything that you're doing. All that you said you were doing just sounds wonderful. But I do want to say that I can concur that there is a disconnect between what you're offering and all the work that you're doing and the residents that need it. So that was just one comment. The other comment is, I don't know if some of the rent can be handled legislatively. I'm not advocating for rent control. But for example, what I pay for an apartment is actually a mortgage. It's the amount of a mortgage. And I would love to have a home, but I don't. I have an apartment. And there's no place for your teacups in an apartment. So they're in a box. They're in storage. And every apartment dweller probably has the same kind of thing. But the one thing I wonder if it can be done is legislatively suggesting that it's, rent is one thing, but we also pay the water. We pay the electricity. We pay the sewer. We pay everything we would on a house. So basically, I'm paying mortgage and all the expenses for a mortgage. And yet, if I want to go apply for a home, I'm told, "Sorry, you can't afford it." It's like, but I'm already paying it. And so I'm wondering if maybe something can be done to indicate that if somebody's paying a rent, they don't have to pay all those other expenses. They come up to a couple $300 a month, excuse me. So I just wonder if that can be done, and I wanted to suggest that. And thank you so much for your time. I know it's late and everyone's tired, but I really thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for coming up.
Appreciate all that. A few things, just to comment, a few things you're asking. Oregon is one of the very few states that did pass a rent stabilization legislation. And that's where someone alluded to the 10% rent increase that was, that is allowed by the state. Now, that was in reaction to, we are, people were facing 50%, 100% rent increases about, what, 10 years ago, eight years ago? It was rapid. Part of that is tied to when you don't have enough housing supply. You get into some really scary stuff where it's like akin to price gouging, essentially. So taking advantage of a crisis, and that's really why we saw some. They, the governor herself personally saw through that legislation because she wanted it to be statewide. Because what we see all the time is when we have certain legislation on just one locale, we do affect the housing market right nearby and where developers and investors are going. So I think it may not, there is a big loophole in that. Just, just a little bit of nuggets for advocacy. It does exempt properties that are 15 years or younger. So if you're a brand-new build, you're actually more vulnerable to rent increases. So there is some work to be done on that, on the legislative front. In affordable housing, we set our rents at a cap amount, but then we take out the utility amount. Because every property, to your point, decides whether the property pays for utilities or whether the tenants pay. But if the, if the affordable housing, if Rachel says, "Okay, I want the tenants to pay all the utilities," she has to lower her rents by a certain amount to accommodate for that. So that's where affordable housing is more unique and tries to take into account the full housing costs for folks.
Anyone else? All right. Well, I'm not seeing any hands. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank our panelists for their insights and their commentary and for answering the, you know, questions. With that, I'll go ahead and close this work session. Everyone have a great evening and safe travel home.